All right, do I go find another one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good, Ducky.
Yay! Good job!
Do you guys have one of those at home?
Yeah.
No? Maybe you can get a chance to go over there and play with it. We love Lizzie Bee's, they got all the toys. And then you'll be ready to go get some Easter eggs.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Easter Bunny can't hear you! Sing bright! Again! Where?
On the April 15th. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you, we have a few special presentations tonight. This may be a record for the number of them, I'm not sure.
I was just gonna say that.
Sorry for stealing your thunder, this Madam Mayor.
So we have four presentations tonight. Two for Loi Updike and Curtis Cowbill for their community service, and we have two proclamations. The Rotary has a milestone 100th anniversary, and Earth Day, and the EAC, and their first celebration for Earth Day in our park. So we'll start with Curtis Cowbill. And this plaque is for Curtis's service on Borough Council, but Kurt also was on our vacancy board from 2008 essentially to 2024. Served on the Shade Tree Commission and on the Environment Advisory Committee. Apologies. So Kurt, in appreciation for your dedicated service as the Borough Councilperson representing Ward Two in 2023, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Did you want to say anything?
Sure, I'll say one. I didn't say a couple words. I just want to thank the council for allowing me to serve for a year and be a part of you. I've thoroughly enjoyed the experience, and I was amazed at the professionalism and the sense of duty and service of each of the members. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
Don't mess with Larry.
Thank you very much.
We miss you.
I showed my time, I miss you all too.
And now, Loi. First, Karen Young could not be here this evening, but she did send a letter, and we put it with your certificate. And I'll read, not the whole thing, but just the close. "You can take personal pride in the contribution that you made short our group's mission regarding preserving and enhancing Doylestown as a vital community for all who live, work, and visit here. Thank you for your service." So for your certificate of appreciation is presented in recognition of your 20 years of service on the Economic Advisory Board, 2004 to 2023. Thank you for your dedication and contribution to the Doylestown Borough community.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, it was my pleasure to give my time and talent to the borough. When I first came on board, it was the Doylestown Borough Revitalization Board, and Tom Jarrett was president of council, and Karen Young was chair. So that was very nice of her to write that letter. So that was very nice. So thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. Thanks very much.
And now for the Rotary. We have Helen Amlesberg, who is the president, is here. And then, I understand, we have somebody here whose grandfather is founder of the Rotary. We have long time, people have 10 years in the Rotary, and we have a generation of family members. So did everybody want to come up here?
Yeah, I'll come up.
Come on up.
Y'all come.
Let me marry her. Wow.
Hey Larry, you got a wide angle lens?
So this is a proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the Doylestown Rotary Club. 100 years ago, Webster, Mike, Ashley became interested in the Service Above Self mission of Rotary Men Services Clubs. Mike impressed the concept of service on community leaders, and with the sponsorship of Lansdale Rotary Club, the Provisional Rotary Club of Doylestown was organized on April 28, 1924. On May 27, 1924, the charter presentation took place at the Doylestown Armory. The Doylestown Rotary in its early years focused on youth and youth leadership for organizations like the Boys Brigade of America, events for underserved children, support for Doylestown High School athletic teams, and projects like erecting Adirondack cabin shelters for the Boy Scouts. During World War II, the club filled stockings with gifts for servicemen at Willa Grove Naval Air Station, and participated in local civilian defense activities. Whereas through the years, the Rotary, who has supported the Doylestown Hospital, raised funds for War Memorial Field, supports Doylestown celebrations and events, is involved with their youth, brings us a Doylestown at Dusk Car Show and more, has become part of the fabric of Doylestown Borough. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Borough of Doylestown honors the 100th anniversary of the Doylestown Rotary, and by doing so honors the vision of Mike Ashy and all those who built and build upon that vision to make the Rotary an integral part of the Doylestown community. Thank you.
So I do have a few words to say. Hold on a second. I have prepared. It's going to take about 10 minutes. Hope you're all all right with that. Got a coffee? Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Helen Amlesberg, the current president of Doylestown Rotary Club. Today, as we gather to accept the 100-year proclamation from the Doylestown Borough Council, I'm deeply honored to be joined by a group of distinguished individuals from our Rotary family, each making significant contributions to our club's legacy. First, I'd like to introduce, where is he? Nick Malloy. He's our longest-serving member with an impressive 56 years of dedication to Rotary. His family ties to Rotary date back to our club's founding fathers, with his grandfather being one of the founding members. This connection makes Nick's commitment even more remarkable given Rotary's establishment in 1905, marking the beginning of the global Rotary movement, while Doylestown's Rotary Club itself was established locally a mere 20 years later in 1924. Next, I want to acknowledge Jim Gilhorn and Tom Cooby. Where are you, behind me? Whose steadfast commitment spans 54 years and 49 years respectively. Their leadership and dedication have been instrumental in shaping our club's success, embodying Rotary's true spirits. And let's not forget our multi-generational family of Rotarians. Where are we? Dick, Rick, and Barry Milham, whose passion for Rotary principles enrich our community. So you have a whole generation, a whole family here. Barry's involvement in our Rotary Young Professionals Program highlights our club's diversity and inclusivity, ensuring Rotary's impact for the foreseeable future. Our young professionals, typically in their mid-20s to early 40s, bring fresh perspectives and energy to Rotary. They are currently organizing Voice for the Voiceless, a concert on May the 4th, to raise awareness about human trafficking that does happen here in Bucks County. We invite you all to join us for this vital event. And today, as we accept this proclamation, it's crucial to also recognize a significant role played by our Doylestown at Dusk Car Show, of which I proudly serve as the chairperson. This event, scheduled for Saturday, the 20th of July, is a vital fundraiser for our Rotary Club and our community. Last year alone, we raised over $26,000, drawing 25,000 people and over 500 vehicles to Doylestown streets. Registration for this year's event opened today at noon, and we sold all of our VIP spots in a record 12 minutes.
Wow.
Showing our community's excitement and engagement for this event. None of this would have been possible without the unwavering support of the Borough Council. Your dedication to our causes has been instrumental in our ability to make a meaningful difference in the life of others. Locally, we've empowered countless individuals through scholarships, grants, and transformative service projects. Through our international efforts, we've made significant strides in eradicating diseases like polio and providing access to clean water sources in impoverished areas. These endeavors showcase Rotary's commitment to service above self, creating a brighter future for all, both locally and globally. As we accept this proclamation, let's celebrate the remarkable contributions of our members and all those who came before us. Their legacy will continue to inspire us as we carry forward Rotary's mission for generations to come. It is both an honor and a privilege to accept this proclamation on behalf of Doylestown Rotary Club. Thank you.
And now Steve. Earth Day. So Steve is here from the EAC, Steve Nelson. And this is a proclamation recognizing April 22 as Earth Day. Wisconsin Senator Gaylord Nelson, an ardent conservationist, created Earth Day in the spring of 1970 to force the environment into the national agenda. Environmental activism in the 60s, Rachel Carson's Silent Spring, Santa Barbara oil spill, and the Cuyahoga River fire in early 1969 all led Nelson to establish Earth Day, which is April 22. Whereas we are all caretakers of our planet, and we have a responsibility to preserve the earth's beauty and resources for the benefits of its current and future inhabitants of all species. Whereas this year marks the 54th anniversary of the Earth Day movement, let it be known that Doylestown Borough asks our businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet, its inhabitants, and its resources. Now therefore, the Borough of Doylestown hereby proclaims April 22, 2024, as Earth Day, and invites residents to join the Borough's Environmental Advisory Commission in celebrating Earth Day at Broad Commons Park on Saturday, April 20, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and to do everything possible to reduce consumption of the earth's resources, fight climate change, support green economy initiatives, and encourage others to undertake action. I'm missing, take my glasses off. Did you want to say anything?
I would, thank you. Well, as another Nelson, I appreciate the recognition of Earth Day from a non-relative. On behalf of the EAC, though, we'd like to thank you, Mayor and council, for supporting Earth Day and the environment here in the borough. And we welcome you all this Saturday, from 10 to 1 at Broad Commons Park, for our first celebration of Earth Day. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Can I just give a shout out to the EAC? Because this group of volunteers on the EAC, including Steve and others on the committee, they put together this Earth Day thing very, very quickly with the assistance of Karen Highland and Caitlin Hernandez, our staff. So I just wanted to thank them by name. Grant Elger, Dan Ford, Karen Graziano, George Mulligan, of course Steve Nelson, Dave Rydel, and Patricia P.R. West. Thank you very much.
Give Madam Mayor a moment to come up. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our March 18 meeting. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Go move.
Second.
And a second. A second was by Joe Frederick, I believe. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Mayor?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Frederick.
The only thing I have tonight for you, Mr. President, is the Doylestown Fire Company report. Everyone has that in their packet, and that is it for my report.
Thank you. Public Works and Administration, Mr. Brown. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, we've got a few things on the agenda tonight, Mr. President. The first thing is the MS4 sediment reduction project at Font Hill. As you see on the screen, the Borough's stormwater collection system is governed by the municipal's small, separate storm sewer system permit pollutant reduction requirements. Say that three times fast. A recent change to regulations concerning reduction of sediment loads in the runoff required at the Borough to find projects and opportunities to improve stream channels and therefore reduce the sediment loading. The Borough, being a fully-developed community, has very few locations or opportunities for stream channel improvements that do not adversely impact private property or our limited existing forested areas. Consequently, we have identified a section of stream channel that drains from the Belmont Square neighborhood and traverses the Font Hill property before coming back into the Borough. The section of stream channel proposed for improvement is mostly in the open front pasture of Font Hill Castle, and because Font Hill is a disconnected island of Doylestown Township surrounded by the Borough, it qualifies for reduction of the Borough's sediment loading. Project is being partially funded by the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, infrastructure program. Sorry. As the first step, a public bid is being initiated for the proposed work. Attached is the engineer's opinion of probable cost and draft advertisement for bids for the Font Hill post-construction stormwater management improvements. The full plan, set, and specifications are online at the link, you see, the bitly link you see up there on the screen. It's also available online. And the improvements to be completed under this project consist of all labor, equipment, and materials to construct stormwater management improvements consisting of two retentive berms with stone filter outlets, one sediment for bay, and associated swales to connect them. Work also includes all labor, equipment, and materials for the restoration of approximately 158 linear feet of stream using jute netting and live stakes. It is projected that the sediment load reduction from these water quality improvements will meet or exceed the 20,700 pound per year total suspended solid reduction required by the Borough's current permit. The Public Works Committee reviewed the proposed advertisement and project scope, and is recommending that council authorize the advertisement for bids. And if council agrees, it may do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We had a second by Mr. Kinney, I believe, yes. Any questions from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item is the always annually anticipated road materials bid. Bids were publicly opened and read on February 27, 2024 by the Bucks County Consortium for the purchase of road materials for the 2024-2025 season. The following is a tabulation of the three most purchased materials, as you can see on the screen. Based on these materials, the low bidder is Eureka. Last year's low bid was obtained also from Eureka. The Public Works and Administration Committee has reviewed the bids and is recommending the award to Eureka Stone Quarry Incorporated. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it may do so by making a motion conditioned upon receipt of a properly executed performance bond and compliance with the bid specifications, and I so move.
Second.
We had a second, I think, from Mr. Frederick.
Yep.
Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none? Like any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And before I hand it over to Mr. Ellinger for the Public Works report, I just wanted to give kudos out to the Public Works team for their great work on both the egg hunt, including an appearance of our... What's his title again?
Director of...
Assistant Director.
Public Works.
Director of Easter Public Works, right? Dave Berger in a rabbit costume, which I never get out of my mind. And also for the preparatory work that was done and made the kids' fishing derby another success. We saw some pretty big fish come out of there, too. Also, branch and stick pickup is coming up on May 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. And if you go to the Doylestown Borough website and look for "spring branches", you can sign up for pickup. But you must contact the Borough to get the sticks picked up. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Ellinger.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and thank you, Ms. Highland, for putting up the web form that you can sign up for. A bunch of other things that Public Works has been working on, I'll touch upon, streetlight, underground electrical service repairs downtown, which all seem to be going bad at the same time. Storm sewer inlet repair work. We've been chasing potholes this time of year in preparation of paving season. We've done several tree takedowns, both scheduled and unscheduled. The ball fields have been manicured and sorted for the playing season with new infield bicks and ongoing dugout upgrades. We have new trash and recycling cans going in downtown. We have, the flower basket plant material was delivered to the greenhouses at Delval, who have been our great partners in our flower basket program. And they are nurturing those plants, getting ready for the planking day. We put them in the baskets, right down there in flats, and then we'll do deployment. This year, the design of the baskets, which normally has been just a collaboration between Public Works staff and the college, the students will be specifically designing 10 special baskets for deployment across the street in Broad Commons Park. So they're really taking a hands-on approach to some of the special baskets. So we look forward to seeing what they come up with. As many homeowners know, the grass is growing. So today was the first day of mowing season. You'll see our mowers out and about in the parks. And a reminder that Broad Commons, across the way, is a designated pollinator lawn, and is pesticide and herbicide free. And Larry mentioned spring branch pickup, and that is the end of our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellinger. That's all we have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Bell, I believe you're with us on Zoom tonight. Do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and government affairs did not meet, but I have one observation about May 3, which is looking to be a very busy time because it's the final day of twig and branch pickup. But it's also the final day that we are accepting nominations for the Youth Leadership Recognition Program. So plan accordingly. That's my report, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Zoning and planning, Ms. Jarrett, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I do. We did meet regularly, excuse me, for our monthly meeting. At the monthly meeting, we approved certificates of appropriateness based on HARB recommendations for the Historic Architectural Review Board for Doylestown. There were no sign applications. The building applications were 36 North Church Street for windows. The HARB recommended that the application be approved for certificate of appropriateness and with the condition that the front windows be replaced with either Pella Reserve or Anderson with 1 1/8 inch or 1 1/4 inch muntens, and the third-floor windows be recessed to the original paint line. Next was 101 Southwest Street for a second-floor addition. as a living memorial to the sacrifices of our community's veterans for the purpose of benefiting the youth of the Borough. Since its establishment, the use of the field has been governed by agreements between the Borough and the Central Bucks School District. The current agreement dates to 1988 and terminates in 2033. Almost since its establishment, the field has been the home to the American Legion Baseball Team of Doylestown, Albert R. Atkinson Jr., American Legion Post 210's youth baseball team. Although the current agreement does not directly address the team, no field usage fee has ever been required of them by the Central Bucks School District. In February 2024, Legion Baseball was informed by the Central Bucks School District that a field usage fee would be required for their use of the field in 2024 and beyond. The annual fee is $7,000, although the school district has offered to reduce it to $3,500 for the first year only. A request from Borough staff to Central Bucks School District staff to waive the fee has been rejected. Attached are requests from Post 210 and American Legion Baseball requesting that Borough Council and the mayor forward a request to the Central Bucks School Board to waive any fees for the use of War Memorial Field. The Environment and Recreation Committee is recommending that council honor the requests and submit such appeal. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Levrone. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Yeah, Mr. President, just a quick question. As item number eight noted, that bifurcated the application and recommended it be approved, and it just says renovation. Can you describe what the renovations are?
I mean, we... Sorry, we looked at them over a week ago, so...
Sure.
Usually, when it's something that is tabled, like windows or something like that, it's more to do with the materials or the selection by the... So they will table it and then bring it back for approval when they've been given some kind of indication by the HARB on what they're looking for, if that makes sense. Yeah. Do you remember any specifics about that stuff?
Any other?
I can help out.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Highland.
There's a small addition that's involved, and there's some siding repair work, and just kind of cleaning up the condition of the house a bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, as you can see, it was a lot, and it was quite some time ago, so...
Any other questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Additionally, the code enforcement report and building inspection report are in the packet. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett. Environment and Rec, Ms. Wykoff, you have something for us tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Borough of Doylestown is the owner of a 14-acre tract founded by West State Street, Memorial Drive, and McFarlane Lane, known as War Memorial Field. Gifted to the Borough in 1946, the field and its athletic facilities were established as a living memorial to the sacrifices of our community's veterans for the purpose of benefiting the youth of the Borough. Since its establishment, the use of the field has been governed by agreements between the Borough and the Central Bucks School District. The current agreement dates to 1988 and terminates in 2033. Almost since its establishment, the field has been the home to the American Legion Baseball Team of Doylestown, Albert R. Atkinson Jr., American Legion Post 210's youth baseball team. Although the current agreement does not directly address the team, no field usage fee has ever been required of them by the Central Bucks School District. In February 2024, Legion Baseball was informed by the Central Bucks School District that a field usage fee would be required for their use of the field in 2024 and beyond. The annual fee is $7,000, although the school district has offered to reduce it to $3,500 for the first year only. A request from Borough staff to Central Bucks School District staff to waive the fee has been rejected. Attached are requests from Post 210 and American Legion Baseball requesting that Borough Council and the mayor forward a request to the Central Bucks School Board to waive any fees for the use of War Memorial Field. The Environment and Recreation Committee is recommending that council honor the requests and submit such appeal. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Levrone. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Yes, James.
Good evening. I'm here, James Lannan, 132 East Ashland Street. I'm just here in my capacity as the Chair of the Park Board. The Park Board discussed this issue extensively at its last meeting, and we would implore the council to please proceed with this appeal and get this fee waived. Post 210 should not be treated like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Come on up, Rick.
My name is Rick Herring. I am a school board director for Region 6 for Central Bucks School District. I am also the Chair of the Business and Operations Committee as well for the school district. I'd like to first apologize for it getting to this point, for you having to actually make a motion to contact the school board directors and the school board to actually get this resolved. What I will commit to the public and to this committee is that on next Wednesday, I've already put this on our agenda for us to actually try to resolve and remove the fees and honor what has been given to the American Legion in the past. So fully supportive of the motion. I'll be receptive of it on behalf of the school board directors, and we'll look to action that next Wednesday. So again, I apologize to everyone out there. I'd like to also say, as somebody who is a son of someone that served in the Air Force, who has a brother that served 20 years in the Army, and who has a father-in-law who served in Vietnam as an active veteran, I am very sorry that any of our veterans or anyone had to go through this. If you showed up here tonight, thank you very much for your service, and we'll get a fix for you guys. Thank you.
Steve Roy, General Manager of the Doylestown American Legion Baseball. We're sorry as well we got to this point. It was very nice to meet Rick tonight. We've spoken in the past. We're glad we can get this taken care of. Hopefully, we can move forward and replace baseball. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Levrone.
Yes, Mr. President. Water Utility Committee met this month, and we got an update on the Maplewood Tank Rehabilitation Project, and we have with us tonight our chief water operator, Jeremy Otso. And I'm going to read a narrative here about getting bids for the work on the Maplewood Tank Rehabilitation Project. Bids were opened and publicly read for the above referenced project on April 4, 2024. The low bidder was Minoan Industrial LLC of Red Lion, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $642,931. The Water Utility Committee, water engineer, Borough Solicitor, and Chief Operator have all reviewed the bid and are recommending it be awarded to Minoan Industrial, conditioned upon compliance with the bid specifications. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Kinney, I believe it was. Yes. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Levrone.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I could, I just want to commend Jeremy Otso particularly took us all on a water tour last week of various well sites, and it was an earth-shaking experience, although we didn't actually know that there was an earth...
We were driving between... Between wells, yeah.
Between wells, but just wanted to express my appreciation to Jeremy for his time and his patience answering questions, and he's an asset to the community, and it was a great opportunity for us, so thank you very much.
I second that. Thank you, Mr. Kinney.
Thank you. Ms. Popkin, Finance and Pension, you have anything?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Finance and Pension did meet this month, and we reviewed the pre-audit 2023 budget, and we don't have any other actions on that, but we do have the finance report that is included in the packet, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Brinker.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. Everyone was provided with a finance report showing prepaid bills, accounts payable and payroll. The total for all funds is $848,784.11.
Thank you, and I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Second was by Ms. Jarrett. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none. I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. Personnel Committee did not meet this month. We have no report. Mr. Doherty, you have anything for us?
Thank you. I have nothing tonight.
No report. No report. Chief, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Residents' Report. I just want to make a comment. We saw tonight how the community supports the... Members of the community support us, and we saw Mr. Herring, how he stepped up to correct what is an obvious oversight, and I just want to commend everybody involved in this community because it really is what makes this community the great place it is to live and visit and everything. So just keep that in mind as things come and go. We do our best up here to resolve issues. Sometimes we're more successful than others, but... So thank you very much. Any items of old business? Hearing none. Any items of new business? Nobody signed up for public comment? And we do have an executive session tonight regarding potential litigation, and I'm not sure we're going to have any action coming out of it.
We don't anticipate any action items.
Okay, so we will... I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So I heard... I didn't catch Larry. Larry and Joe. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.